All right. It is 7:05 PM approximately on August 30th, and I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. We'll begin this meeting as we do all others. Kaitlin, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it very much.
I've got my own.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will open the floor for public comment, and then we have a special presentation in case anyone wants to say anything. Not seeing anyone jump to the mic, so we will proceed to our next portion. I don't know, Meredith, about a month ago, I was at the elementary school, and I saw one of our custodial staff members doing a yeoman's job, doing her job the best that she could in the rain, and I said, "We have some amazing people who work for us in the custodial department. You all have done a yeoman's job to the person to keep these buildings clean and fresh and in the construction sites, and boilers working, and all of these beautiful things for all these years, and I just wanted to take this opportunity as a school board to thank you for all the hard work and the dedication that you guys have shown to this district and our students, and we appreciate it greatly." Meredith, if you'd like to say?
I mean, this summer's been particularly challenging, probably the most challenging in probably your memory, and I would say that's true, that's true in both buildings. So, folks have gone really above and beyond. The schools look so much better than anyone could possibly have imagined. I don't think, most people coming in probably wouldn't know that it was any different than any other year, but we know better.
Yep.
So, again, I'm really grateful. I want to ask Greg Marles, our facilities director, to introduce these folks, and then we have small, sadly, but tokens of our appreciation to offer you.
Well, thank you. I also am extremely proud of these guys. They did a heck of a job, and I got to tell you, you know, looking at these guys here and ladies, you've got to think about what would happen, happened in the schools, how many changes, and constant calling to Brian and Jamie always going, "Hey, by the way, we're going to do it this way because we had to change this, and we're going about this," and just the maneuvering, and they did it awesome. They really did, and I know there was people thinking at one point, "We weren't going to be opening school in time," but I can tell you, these guys all had positive attitudes, and we all pushed together, and it came, came together, and we were able to do that. I do want to bring up Brian and Jamie. They're supervisors of the custodial staff in each school, so if Brian and Jamie could come up, please.
And they're about 14 hours into their day, probably, at this point, so.
A little bit. I think it's, I think it's important to recognize the whole staff. These two guys actually manage the individual schools. Brian handles the elementary school, and Jamie handles the junior senior high. I also think it's a good idea to have them come forward and bring their staffs up and introduce their staffs to everybody, so that they get that opportunity to thank their own staffs too, so. So, what I'd like to do is if, Brian, you can bring your staffs up, and those of us here to help out.
Brian, first, thank you for all the hard work. We appreciate it very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
For my staff, I have two members with me. It's Paula Smart and Patty Welsh with me tonight.
Patty.
I'm sorry, three. Sarah.
Why are you leaving Sarah off?
Sarah V. So, three. Yeah, we're missing two.
Patty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a 14-hour start.
Thank you very much.
One more to go.
Thank you. Had you saved my daughter from the bathroom on her kindergarten years.
(laughing). Got to love it.
And then on my staff of the high school, I got Devon.
Arnold.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you too, guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do want to say again, thank you to everybody, these guys. It just, I, if you hadn't been in the school during the summer, you would have seen just amazing amount of stuff going on, and the fact that these guys pulled it all together and were ready to open, so moving forward.
I do just want to mention the folks who weren't able to be here. Please correct me, Brian and Jamie, if I missed anybody, but Randy Critchett, Roger Reeser, Steve Fillion, Kevin McGinty, Evan Jones, and Kelly Dossett.
Correct.
They're our full team, so.
Before you guys creep out, I'd like for the board to come and thank you all, because we all are great, really appreciative of it, so we'll just take a five-minute recess in our meeting and just come down and thank you all personally. We just took a few-minute recess to congratulate the custodians who are here and to thank them for their hard work, so we'll resume with our agenda.
And we should tell everybody at the beginning of school, if they see them, just to shake their hand and thank them as well.
Excellent point. The first thing on our agenda for reports is the superintendent report. Meredith, would you like to receive your report?
Sure. So, my first item is that we currently have $213,106 available to us in impact fees. Again, that's a 2021 drawdown deadline. We are obviously, as you just heard from our custodial folks, in the ramp-up for school, and over the last couple of weeks, that has meant a few things for us. One of those was administrative legal training, kind of a principals' boot camp that focused on supervision, confidentiality, harassment, discrimination, conducting investigations, laws about restraint and seclusion. We also, on Monday of this week, had our teacher leaders in for a half-day to also work with our administrative team in planning forward for the upcoming year, which was exciting. We had new teacher orientation on Tuesday, and our paraprofessional staff have been in training, or were in training, Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, and they had a little bit more today as well on crisis intervention, CPR and first aid, some social emotional learning information, applied behavioral analysis, and more.
So, with CPI.
CPR and first aid, some social emotional learning, applied behavioral analysis and behavior management, Medicaid, log training. We will be working on our draft CIP to share with you next week. It's also due to the town next week, because they'll begin that review process, I think, the second week in September. In your manifest packet tonight is the DOE 25 for signature, so that's our year-end report to the state.
What's the other one? Is it 27?
Well, it's DOE 25, MS-25, but then the MS-27 is the one that's yet posted.
Okay, I can remember, not that it matters for children.
Yes, so, right, one goes to the Department of Ed, and one goes to the Department of Revenue Administration.
Okay.
We also, I've been working with the police department and the New Market Housing Authority with some help from Lisa, Jamie Hayes, Chris Mazzoni, our recreation department, to coordinate passage for our athletes after school via the Maple Street neighborhood, and we sent a letter to those residents. I've spoken with a couple who are supportive of our general mission, and it is our intention to be good neighbors in that process, and our coaches will work with our athletes to make sure we are taking care of the area and not leaving any trash behind. It is also not our intention at any time to have that be parking access to cut through to the fields. We have reserved parking on the other end of the New Market Housing Authority property off of Terrace Drive, where summer parking was for the recreation department, so that parking is available to us through the fall season, and we would encourage our athletes, coaches, visiting fans to park in that spot if they're attending games.
Is that grassy lot still available?
It is. Yes. And we have, it's covered with our insurance binder. All of those pieces are in place, and the housing authority has granted its permission for that use. Other than that, I can give you construction updates when we get to that point, I think. School starts on Tuesday.
It does. Exciting times. Any school board committee reports for the next item on our agenda? I'm sure there's, might be a building committee update.
Well, we had a budget meeting, but I instead attended the high school meeting.
Ah, okay.
So, I did catch up on that, but we'll just, we'll just report.
Okay.
And not much in terms of substance from a building committee since the last time we, again, we'll meet once a month going forward. Meredith probably has some updates. There's been a lot of scrambling this week just to get schools ready and get in, so.
Yeah, I would say that has been our primary focus over this last two-week period, and our work with our construction management team is just making sure they were, things that were scheduled for completion were wrapping up, and that has been going according to plan. We had a couple minor things happen that you expect in a project like this, like the wrong-size window came in for the doors, or glass for the doors. But the new glass was being installed today. They're finishing up the security, well, the doors are all tied in, but they're finishing up some security camera installation. Staff got their badges today. I think just those kinds of odds and ends. We're never helped by humidity. When it's this close to the start of school, it's very difficult for floors to dry and carpets to dry and spaces to be ready, but I think we are in really good shape, and I want to thank our teachers. We gave them a full day in their classrooms yesterday to be able to get things set up the way they need them, but normally, many of our teachers try to come in earlier in the summer and kind of take their time plugging away at things, so the fact that it was, you know, 95 degrees at best made it fairly challenging, but walking around yesterday, people had good spirits and were helping each other out. I, you know, lugged boxes with some folks, were moving things back and forth, and just, again, generally being really positive and supportive of one another, so we appreciate that very much.
So, the security cameras, are we, do we get new ones to add just to protect the construction site? Or are these?
So, these are the cameras that were originally proposed. We have about 70 of them, I think, across the schools. They are not specifically for the purpose of the construction site, but we do have visibility of our construction site, just as we had visibility of the periphery of our school previously.
And, yeah, I guess, we had two forums this week, right?
Yeah.
We mentioned that, so where folks came, and I think about 50 or so people showed up for the high school, and maybe 15 or so for the elementary this week, and just going through, you know, patterns, traffic patterns, drop-off times during the, during this year in light of construction. And the principals also sent out emails with specifics on that, so if people are looking for information on where traffic patterns and all that, they can look to those emails, but also call us, call the principals.
It's posted on the school website as well.
Yeah, yep.
But yes, if you have specific questions, definitely reach out, and I know some of the questions from the forums were about things, nothing to do with construction, but just some of those basics about, you know, where do I, how do I know which bus my child is on? How do we take care of putting children on the bus? So, if you have those questions on your mind, reach out to us, but I assure you, we are looking forward to having your children back and feel that our schools are in really great shape for that.
And we appreciate the flexibility of our faculty, staff, the students coming in, the community members as we contend with the ongoing projects. I know that, you know, as you said, people maybe didn't have the maximum amount of time to set up their rooms, but I know from people I've interacted with today that they're excited to have the students back on Tuesday and feel prepared to do it.
And there are some open houses going on at the elementary school today, and students have been in all week, really, getting, making schedule changes at the junior senior high, visiting classrooms, getting organized, new students registering, so we've had, we've had a taste of what's to, what's to come.
I will say that this week was my first time being in either one of the buildings since June, and so it was interesting to see, you know, at the elementary school, the completely renovated band music room, and what used to be an accordion door is now a real wall, and you can see changes happening, walking through the main, the new main entrance of the junior senior high, and seeing where the office is, and seeing those pieces, it's exciting to see it all sort of come off the paper and be real.
And there was an article in Seacoast News online, but Channel 13, Tim was gracious enough to come and take some video as well, so he's working on getting that up online for folks in town to see.
Awesome. All right. Any other committee reports?
CIP committing, and we're going to have our first meeting on the 6th. Thanks to my director of facilities, I think the committee's got a very different job this year inasmuch as a lot of the CIP was focused on facilities. What do we need for boilers, and what do we need for roofs, and all that. Greg has put together a complete facility report for the town, and it's going to, it's going to greatly enhance our whole CIP process, and it's very meaningful.
Great. Excellent.
Ingrid's not here, but I would just mention that the SST board met on Monday evening, and, yeah, we'll meet again the third Monday in September, and just looking forward to calendar for the upcoming year largely.
Excellent. All right, moving into our discussion items, no, school board calendar. We have Caitlin, who's here to do her first calendar, and I said, "I skipped it."
And student report.
Yes, please, Caitlin, give us your student report.
All right. So, for general news, high school student leaders successfully began preparing for this year, this past Monday, from 11 to 2 in the town council chambers. All fall sports are in full swing, both boys and girls. High school varsity soccer teams have a record of 2-0, winning against Littleton on the 24th and Epping on Tuesday. Both teams play Woodsville High School tomorrow at 3:30 and 5:30 for the first home game of the season, and co-ed varsity cross-country had their first meet today at Guilford High School.
Excellent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Oh, you're fine. So, usually, we just look at the calendar and see if there's anything coming up that we need to know, but I would say the most important thing coming up is the first day of school.
All right.
And we should remind people as well, we have another board meeting on the 6th, but there is no school on September 11th due to the state primary.
Ah, yes.
So, the elementary school is the election site that day, so that is a, you'll be in school a whole week and get a day off.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Moving on to discussion items, the school board goals are the next thing, and I sort of came up with some stuff, but I thought it might be good for us to sort of talk through them a little bit in the meeting. One of the things we talked about at our retreat was firming up the goals and coming up with measurable evaluation for them in terms of what's the goal, what are our goals we're going to get done? And sort of, these are the four frameworks that I came up with. We can talk about them, and then to talk about measurability of each one. The first one is develop a district-wide strategic plan that provides a clear mission and vision, engage stakeholders from all parts of the community for input and engagement. For that one, I had draft completed by fall 2018, because it should be, and the final plan by spring 2019. The next one that I had was effective timing, consistent communication with all stakeholders to encourage engagement and participation. The third one, provide consistent oversight of all facets of the ongoing building project. Work with the district superintendent and the clerk of the works to monitor and manage the process to progress successfully. Review district policies to ensure that they are in accordance with all state and federal regulations and statutes. Updates should be made in a timely manner. So, from those, the four core areas that I had, and we can add to them or take away. Strategic plan was number one, communication, building project, policy. Are there any areas that I missed? If so, what are those? Any that we should take off? Let me know.
That's good.
I think it's a good place to start.
Yeah, other than, you know, the, the contract negotiations, maybe a.
I was trying to, thank you, Mike, I forgot.
Maybe one.
Yeah.
Successful contract negotiations.
And I, just to share a thought with you, I think this, I think we need to really think through or spend some time talking about having a strategic plan done in the fall of 2018. It's going to be done, it's so close to us now. We, you know, we, it's just, I don't, I don't know how we're going to fit it in, like it did.
Well, I know we did engage the firm, and I know we talked at the last meeting about compiling a committee to get it started, but I definitely understand what you're saying, Al, but I think the horse is kind of out of the barn.
It just means we're going to be busy with that budget. It's going to be.
Negotiations.
Negotiations.
Building and, and I'm not dismissing it as not being the first priority either.
And I, these are not even in any, I just put them as they came to me.
No, 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 I mean, above, I think it has a priority above many of the things with the building, the budget, negotiations, but those things have got to be, and I just, it's, it, again, I think about it and I reflect, is, you know, we. we wanna do a really good job on it, we wanna be thorough, we wanna be comprehensive. I just, I worry about it.
Let me offer this, Al, I think it was the last meeting we discussed the framework for the committee to do that. And I think it really only involves one board member. So it's, we'll have a role in it in approving things, but I don't think we'll have a day-to-day or week-to-week type of role in it. I think that committee will do it. And then they'll form it and work with a consultant, they'll come back to us. I do agree that we've got a lot on our plate, but I think that the way that this is structured, it's doable. I think that's actually in our minutes, the outline of the committee.
Yeah.
And so.
It looks overwhelming.
Point well taken though, I mean, there's a lot there. I mean, it's, but I just don't think it's gonna involve the school board on a week-to-week basis.
I don't think it is either, but it is a strategic plan.
Yeah.
And strategy requires some pretty cerebral, high-altitude thinking to make it happen.
Great.
So just to add that the framework is really broad goals. That's the only part that you're gonna have by the mid-November timeline that you established with our consultant. It's the complete strategic plan with the detailed work isn't going to be to you until at this point, according to your timeline, February, late February.
That's in spring, okay. You know, and I guess we need to sort of think about measurability on the other ones. We have obviously a drop-dead January eighth, two thousand nineteen deadline that we have to have the contract done. Granted, we would like to have it done before that preferably, but that's the deadline that has to be done statutorily. So that gives us that deadline. You know, I think the policy is an ongoing thing. You know, maybe we sort of formalize a certain number of policies per workshop or something.
Can I add to that while you're on that one, Kim, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no.
But on the policies, it strikes me, does it make sense that, I know, I believe you're on it and maybe Ingrid-
It is.
-to identify with the superintendent's assistance those policies? And I think she's, Meredith is kind of doing this already by the ones she presents to us. Which ones are most critical-
Yeah.
-to take a look at in the next year? Maybe we can, you know, pick those off, identify them early on in the next month or so or, and then-
Meredith, is that kind of how you're doing it now, when you bring a policy?
Well, I haven't had a policy committee, so I brought the ones that we were legally required to update to be in compliance with state law changes or-
Gotcha.
...federal regulations. And then I've brought ones that I think need attention. And I've got piles of those sort of waiting. The work of a policy committee really is delving into those policies and making some decisions about what-
Right.
-what the local needs are.
Right.
Transportation's a good example. Your transportation policy says the superintendent will develop bus routes. Well, that might have been true before you hired First Student.
Right.
But First Student develops the bus routes, you have to approve them according to both their contract and your policy. But that's an example of, you know, we're not following that policy. It needs to be updated to reflect current practice and we have many of those.
I mean, it might be as simple as saying there's going to be a concrete, starting on a specific date, a monthly policy committee meeting.
That'd be a great start.
I think that would be a good start. The challenge right now is figuring out when that's gonna be for me as a person with the negotiations, things of that nature.
Right.
But I think that that would be a good first step. If we carve out, Meredith and I, with Ingrid, come up with a time once a month, because that's all I can commit to at this particular time, to have that start.
Yeah, maybe Kim, Ingrid can run with that if she's got more availability.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll have more bandwidth once we get past the fall.
Yeah, right.
But for now, I think that's a reasonable thing. So I think that, I think that committee meeting schedule could be planned within the next month or something like that.
Because I think I asked this before and it's, it's a lot, there's a lot there, a lot of work to do and it really never ends.
No.
It's a constant process, but I mean, I see a lot of catch-up to get where we ought to be. And if we could, I don't know if it's realistic to sort of identify now those ones which we should really-
Right.
-review this year and get through. And then maybe we can particularize it, you know, and get some more.
I think you-
And in that way, Kim, I think we can measure it. We know what we've got to do this year and we can parse it out.
And we should, I assume we should, we should accept the fact that any policy that we have is in compliance with state, federal, local laws, is that fair to assume?
All of the required policies are in place, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then you can prioritize the next tier.
Yeah, so bear in mind, I have a stack about this thick that I'll show you a little later of the legislative changes that impact-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
...education just from this past session. So it's always ongoing.
Building project, we have the weekly meetings that are going on now.
Weekly meetings, weekly status updates. And then, again, the monthly, you know, building committee meetings, okay? And that we, as we voted on probably a month or two ago, I can't recall. We have a process in place for a change order approval. So as things happen, there's a procedure in place to do that. And I just think we keep, I think it's working effectively. And if the board feels that, you know, more information or different information is needed, by all means, let us know. Hopefully, people are starting to become accustomed to that monthly document, which shows change orders, which shows the status of, you know, the finances, what work is coming up, what work was done, so.
One thing that I want to say that, you know, if you go to the front page of our website in the bottom right is the building update, the log with photos and stuff. And I'm not sure how many people are even aware that's there, but it's another way for people to get information to see parts of the building that you can't safely see.
Maybe we could send something out at the beginning, you know, all the stuff that goes home. Just say, hey, Keisha, no.
It's already in my letter and it's also in the town newsletter as a link-
Perfect.
...beginning tomorrow.
On that same subject, we are scheduling every two weeks now, site meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
And the question, I think you and Mike and I can talk about our meetings, whether they need to be every week or every other week.
You can let us know.
The last part is, and I will firm this off and bring it up next time, but I wanted to have some notes so I can just-
Yep.
-tweak them a little bit. Communication. You know, last year there was a goal for some sort of consistent newsletter. What are our thoughts about that now?
It's, it's so, we have so much coming on. The thought of having to, I don't know, it's just one more thing to do, but if you don't do it, people don't know what we're doing. That's just one more thing because it usually falls on you. How do you feel about it?
Well, I need to be more consistent with putting my blurb into Meredith's newsletter. So I will add that the chairperson or her designee will contribute to the superintendent's newsletter on a consistent basis. And even, you know, utilizing all sorts of communications that we, methods that we have as individuals, you know, making sure that someone sees the map for the carpet or property on how the traffic flow is going to go. You know, I make, directing people to the schools if they have questions about those different things. But I will be more consistent with that.
I don't recall, Kim, whether communication is something we have down as one of our workshop sessions coming up? We, you know, we, once a month.
I don't think it was.
There was a list?
No, it wasn't one.
We might want to consider that perhaps.
Okay.
Because communication is a broad term and it means different things in different contexts.
Absolutely.
This communication to the community as we've sort of hinted on already here. This communication amongst ourselves, this communication, you know, with the superintendent. And so I think, I think it's workshop-worthy, obviously, to discuss what we think that means and how we can effectively do it and how we measure if we're successful.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. All right, so I'll make that adjustment. And what I will do is get these prepared for next week. So thus far, we can review them again and then document it.
Thanks for doing that.
No problem.
Good.
Let me save my document. All right, Meredith, I think you are gonna-
Oh, you're ready for this riveting-
We are, state and federal regulations governing schools and education.
There you go. So this is just kind of a broad brush of some of the pieces that inform or cases defined, the work that we do. So I'm gonna kind of move through this, I don't have a clicker, so I'm gonna be standing here, so I probably should. Tim, I'm sure will let me know if that's not working. So if we start with federal education, see, I'm gonna walk away, I'm gonna be the teacher. I'm just gonna do this. If we start with federal education, we're looking at what we now know as ESAA or that every student succeeds that. Before that, it was No Child Left Behind forever, going back to, I think, the fifties. It's been, it was ESEA or the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. We also have FERPA, which is the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act that speaks to, I'm not gonna go into detail about that one, but it speaks largely to student confidentiality. Civil rights laws, which I'll talk a little bit more about. IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. And you have a workshop scheduled in September where Eric is gonna speak to you at length about that topic. And we also have things like the National School Lunch Program. So these are some of the pieces. ESAA itself really is, the change is that now every state has to have a plan developed and ours is linked here, I'm not gonna click on that at the moment, though if you view this later, you can, designed to close achievement gaps. So it's about equity, it's about improved instruction, it's about providing opportunities to students across the country. And every state has to provide documentation of its plan to do that. ESAA also requires specific attention be paid to disadvantaged or high-need students. So they define that as socio-economically disadvantaged, students from racial and ethnic groups who have historically been performed less well in our, in our schools. It requires that all students be taught to high academic standards. So again, every state has to spell out what those standards are and make sure that it's assessing on those standards and those assessment results have to be communicated to the public. So if you go onto our state website, for example, you can click on each community and learn about its data. And as you know, we've done reports to you over the last couple of years about our local student performance data. And part of the state's plan also has to say what happens to schools who aren't meeting those expectations, who are consistently having students fall behind. I just said fall behind, but who are consistently not meeting the growth expectations that have been established. At the high school level, one of the things that's new in New Hampshire's plan are multiple indicators of success for our high school students. So you're looking at a variety of ways that we can assess that. All of our students in grades three through eight take the state assessment. And then we also add the SAT for juniors. But another measure that we have to incorporate for our high school students are two of the following to demonstrate that our students are CCR or college and career ready. So that includes completion of the New Hampshire Scholars Program, grades of C or better in a dual enrollment course, so earning college credit while they're still at the high school. SAT scores at or above the benchmarks. So as of last year, that was four eighty in evidence-based reading and writing and five thirty in mathematics. ACT scores that meet or exceed the college and career-ready benchmarks. Score of three or above on an AP exam. You could also use international baccalaureate exam results, but we don't offer IB here, but some schools do. A CTE, industry-recognized credential, so a number of our students at Seco School of Technology exit with some of those in hand. Completion of New Hampshire Career Pathway Program of Studies. So there are sixteen, I think, career clusters that are spelled out. And our guidance folks do a nice job of walking through those with students. But if you follow the career courses that kind of lead you towards a particular pathway, that's another way to demonstrate your college and career readiness. Scoring level three or above on the ASVAB or the Armed Forces Readiness Assessment or completion of the ACT, National Career Readiness Certificate. So schools are offering a variety of these opportunities to students. And again, to demonstrate that our students are college and career-ready, we need all of our graduating seniors to meet at least two of these objectives. ESAA also governs our entitlement grants. So again, there's a hyperlink there if you want to ever read the text of any of these, but there are a lot of legal pieces that are required. Title one is about services primarily for children who are failing or at risk of failing to meet state academic standards. The allocations to states and to local districts are based on the percentage of students who are considered to be living in poverty based on the National School Lunch Program guidelines. For us right now, that's about twenty-five percent of our student body. So we get an allocation of funds from the state based on that percentage that then we identify our students at the elementary level who are either failing or most at risk of failing to meet the academic standards. Title two is about high-quality professional development, both for our teachers and our administrators. So for us, those funds support our mentoring and induction program for teachers. Also instructional activities, workshops, professional materials, we can bring in, we just purchased some books for our reading group, for example. And activities focused on meeting the needs of diverse learners. So that's one of the state's priorities, which is where the universal design for instruction, workshop opportunities have come from. Also supports the development of leadership competencies and leadership pathways. So we're using some of those funds to support the further development of our teacher leaders as well as work with our administrators this year around supervision and evaluation of teachers. Title three is our English for Speakers of Other Languages Program or English Language Learner Program. And again, that has to supplement the work we already do in the district. So we use those funds largely for after-school and summer learning opportunities for students. We also provide some cultural enrichment opportunities as well as professional development for staff. Title four are considered now, this has gone through a number of iterations, it used to be safe schools, but it's currently student support and academic enrichment grants. In New Hampshire, those are where we received some of our robotics funds from last year. And in the future, we may be able to draw further funds to support wellness activities for students across the board. Title six or seven, I think it might be six, is the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act. And that is a regulation that requires that we remove obstacles for students who are homeless in getting to school. So providing transportation at times, extra tutoring or support to make sure that they're academically successful, allowing them to stay in their homeschool. That would be new market for us if they were living here and lost their housing while they were a student here, until they find permanent housing. Civil rights laws for education apply to disability discrimination, so that's the American with Disabilities Act. Also covers section five oh four, which are accommodations that we need to provide to students in our schools. Civil rights in schools also applies to sex discrimination. So title nine covers sex-based discrimination, also sexual harassment, equity in athletics, among other things. And then race and national origin discrimination is covered by title six of the Civil Rights Act. And again, our job to make sure that those things aren't happening either for students or employees in our school. And to take appropriate measures to investigate concerns. That's federal in a nutshell. Then we move on to the states. And the state also has, because most of the laws governing education are at the state level, not at the federal level, the state also has a number of laws. This is just a sample, but there are laws around educating students at home or how they access public schools if they are being homeschooled. Laws around mandatory attendance and what we have to do if a student is habitually truant. Reports that we have to make, who we need to contact. The state ESAA plan is a state governance structure for us. Under the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, New Hampshire has standards that go above and beyond the federal law. That book is about this thick. And then we also have what are called the ED three hundred or Administration of Minimum Standards in Public Schools. That is this document, which is all the things that tell us about what programs of studies we have to offer, how many students we can have as a maximum in a classroom, it goes into a building code, it gives a lot of specific details around assessments. So it's a pretty comprehensive guide for us. This used to be a book that they gave us, but it got too expensive to keep printing them, so the state now gives us the state statutes on a thumb drive, but these are just the statutes related to education. So, these are on my desktop as well, so that I can share this with people, but again, a lot of tabbed places used to be in my book, so now I have some bookmarked places in my digital file. I mentioned before that the New Hampshire statutes tend to change, this is just an update from one of our education legal consulting firm in New Hampshire that shares with all districts, but these are just the updates in state statutes that pertain to education over the past legislative session. So, these are the kinds of pieces that, again, guide our work and cause us to stay on our toes. And then beyond that, those are the education pieces, but we also have state and federal labor and employment laws, child welfare laws that pertain to things like health and safety, reporting of suspected abuse and neglect. We of course, Lisa Ambrose, our business administrator here, but we of course have state and federal accounting, audit and procurement requirements that we need to comply with. We have Safe Schools Zone Law and Regulations, which dictate things like what we have to report to the police department in the event of an incident at school. Transportation requirements, minimum distance, or students living within a certain radius of the school that we have to provide transportation, all the regulations governing hiring of drivers, testing that they need to comply with. We of course have, and I think it's behind Mike on the shelf, because I saw it when I was getting out the name tags, a book full of local ordinances. And we have things like the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association Regulations, the New Hampshire Retirement System Rules, our collective bargaining agreement. And, last but not least, our local school board policies. So, there are a lot of comprehensive pieces that, that shape the work that we do, and guide the decisions that we make in the interest of our students. So, this is just a quick snapshot, I'm happy to go into detail about anything that people might have questions about.
Are there any policies that include sexual orientation protections and things of that nature?
Yes, those fall under the civil rights regulations that are included in our anti-discrimination policies as well.
The state, I think this legislature adopted an equivalent law this spring, too. No. That is, that is very much just the surface of it, I just, it's a lawyer's dream.
Well, I mean, it just, it just goes to show, you know, we take it from us here, sitting here, making our policy, taking it all the way up, as, as we've seen, there's a lot to consider. A lot that changes with each legislative session or each evolution-
Governor.
Yeah.
Well, you know, in colleges faces, too, there's just about no area of law that, that a school doesn't touch. It can be trademarking, it can be copyright, patent, you know, certainly contract, collective bargaining, everything you can think of.
Excellent, thank you, Meredith. Would you like to take the lead on the first reading of policy, GBB, speaking of policy?
Sure. Let us not completely switch gears, but jump to that.
Hey, Meredith, did you, I don't know if that, is that PowerPoint's in the electronic materials, that'd be helpful?
Yes, it is not, but it will be.
Awesome.
And it'll be posted online as well. So, the second policy in your book is our existing staff conduct policy. It's two paragraphs, it just essentially says employees need to be familiar with and abide by the laws, board decisions and regulations, and carry out their assigned duties, important enforcement board policies, those regulations, et cetera. So, in the year 2018, there are a lot of complexities around staff conduct with students. We live in the age of social media, access, and contact between students and adults is much broader. Most districts have adopted policies that are, provide greater clarity to employees about types of expectations. So I'm not gonna walk through all of these bullets in detail, but they give some specific examples of kinds of things that would fall into prohibited conduct.
Based on the news of late, this is probably a good one to be reviewing right now.
And I think it's always important, I mean, it's something we definitely stress in our orientation every year with new teachers, we take the time to really talk about those things, but I, I would agree with you, I think it's timely for a variety of reasons. So, you know, an example of prohibited conduct would be singling out a particular student or students for personal attention and friendship beyond the normal teacher-student relationship. Again, really trying to make clear what we do expect of our teachers and what we don't. Asking a student to keep a secret would be another example of prohibited conduct. Friending students or engaging in other, any other interactions on social networking sites or through any digital applications outside of school-approved activities. Communicating with students on non-school matters via computer, text messages, phone calls, letters, notes, or any other means. Again, just trying to sort of normalize what it is that we have always expected from our teachers, but to provide greater clarity to folks about that. So I am meeting with the association, I think we agreed on the 11th, just to walk through some of these pieces, and we will bring this back to you for adoption, probably not until October, or prefer the review in October, once we've had those meetings, but that's the reason behind this policy proposal.
Makes sense. All right, moving into our action items, the first one is the approval of the minutes from the August 16th, public and non-public meeting minutes. I seek a motion to approve both those minutes, public and non-public.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKinney to approve the non-public and public meeting minutes from August 16th. Were there any amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is the manifest, how do you have those?
I do. Make a motion to approve the August 30, 2018 payroll and AP manifests, payroll in the amount of $213,625.41. The payable manifest in the amount of $397,516.35. And the bond manifest in the amount of $40,634.39, for a total of $651,776.50.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion for Mr. Zink and a second for Mr. Kennison to approve the manifest as listed. All those in favor of approving the manifests, say aye.
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 Manifest approved. The next thing would be the student employee handbooks that we reviewed last time. Does anyone have any thoughts on any of that? I know Ingrid had sent a thorough list to Meredith, had gotten some feedback on.
I can redo those if it's helpful. Yes?
Yep.
So she had a few questions, some specifically about health-related items, so asking whether we spell out that our students are not only fever-free, but also fever reducer-free for 24 hours. Point being, like, just because you've been on Tylenol doesn't mean you haven't had a fever. So, I think the elementary school did update that in their handbook, just for additional clarity. But it is our expectation that students have not had a fever, so controlling that with medication is still, not eliminate the fact that you have a fever. She also asked about immunizations, and so our immunizations are reviewed by our nurses in compliance with state law, so they do check that. There is no requirement for hepatitis A shot, was one of her questions, and that is not a, not a requirement for us here. She also asked if we do lead screenings for kids starting school. We do not, it is not required in the state of New Hampshire, but we do test our water, and most pediatricians will do that, as told in usually before the age of three.
And now homes are tested for lead before you buy them?
Yes, they are now, mostly, depending on how that sale goes through.
Yeah, and how long it's been in the family.
She asked if we do dyslexia screenings, and that is a requirement under New Hampshire rules, and so we do do those. Those are part of our assessment work with students in K2, although can be discovered later, but for us, we would primarily identify it in those years. She asked a couple of other things that I think were added for clarity, the list of senior privileges, I think, was added. She asked about Chromebook issuance and hotspots, so I think there's some information in, in about those. Actually, sitting right up there, can you pass me that case?
Is that a hotspot?
That is, that is one of our district hotspots. We're actually employing it here in this room tonight, because I can't log on to the SAD server, because we are cutting over our fiber overnight tonight.
Is it the little thing in the box?
It's actually this little device right here, it's pretty small. But we have them in these little cases, because these can be loaned out. Students can check them out at the library to take home if they need access at home, and we have ten of them. And, you know, a few are out pretty consistently, and I'm sure they will be once school starts, but they are temporary support until fiber is, that connection is made tomorrow morning. I think that might have been about it for her questions. I think those are the primary ones.
Looks like a waterproof case, you could take it on your boat.
You could, it's pretty sturdy, I think it's a good fishing tackle box as well.
Does anyone else have any questions about the two handbooks or the employee, the student handbook?
So nice that she went through that, though, because, you know, I see a finger.
I, I, just from our last meeting, Meredith pointed out that it may make sense to separate out the, the list of staff, you know, into an appendix or whatever, and then if we don't make any major changes, we don't have to do this yearly approval, right?
And, and our administrators love that idea, I will say.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
So we'll, we'll be working on migrating for that, so that we can just have a handbook, and then when there are changes, we'll bring them to you for approval.
I just had a comment, we saw a draft of the employee handbook several months ago, and I was concerned about-
Excuse me?
The comprehensiveness of the items. This is such a positive change from my perspective in terms of addressing so many different things. Somebody spent a lot of time on the handbook, and I, I think that whoever or whatever, I have some questions about practice, but I'll talk with you guys later about those. But I think it's just a job extremely well done.
So, are we prepared to vote on these?
Yeah.
I seek a motion to approve the student and employee handbooks that have presented, been presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all those in favor of approving the handbook as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next thing is the review of our schedule, and, Mike, I was just sort of glancing over it, our workshop schedule, and I sort of looked at the first, you know, on the 20th, we're talking about special education, we go into quite a bit of budget. And then on this, for October and November, we're deep into budget in our workshops. So on December 20th, we had a district data, data review, should we, and the second part of that was spring retreat planning, should we move communication into there, so that we can start afresh, maybe in January, with some things that we come up with? Because I'm not sure, since we're gonna be so heavily budgeted for that whole month, I'm not sure it fits anywhere else. At this particular time, not that we're not gonna do things, but I think maybe we could, we could have it-
Yeah, there's not enough hours in the day, I think that's our problem, but, I mean, because we're heavy on a lot of stuff, but this is an important one.
Absolutely.
And maybe our only options aren't a workshop or nothing. Does it make sense for, for us individually to discuss, or to write down, jot down our thoughts in bullet fashion, maybe, of what we think communication is?
I think so.
How we break it down, you know, what may be, what's lacking, and then maybe in just an upcoming meeting, not as a dedicated workshop, just, you know, add that on there again? I think we need to get the ball rolling, so we, we all understand what we think the issues are.
Sounds good.
But, but thank you for looking at that, Kim, I just, I just think waiting till December may be-
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just, we just can't-
You know, you know, all the things, the good work that we're doing, you know, part of that is communicating it out and making sure that we're, we're knowing what's going on, too, again, internal communication, so.
So what are you recommending, Mike, in terms of next steps?
I, I think, maybe, maybe for, not next meeting, it's a little soon, but maybe the meeting after that, that we write down what we, what we think communication is, very, you know, just individually.
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 And then discuss.
Yeah, what we, where we see some opportunities for improvement. And I suspect we'll overlap quite a bit, and then we can go from there and, and decide whether we need another workshop or whatever we need to do to- It's kind of like one of these building the plane and flying it things, we think we need to get going on.
Okay.
So how does that affect the, its place in the strategic plan? We identified five issues, does that pull it out of there, or does?
You mean, the, the goals?
Yeah. Or is it just how we're gonna address one of them?
I think it's just how we're gonna address that one area of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, no, it's definitely gonna be part of it.
Okay.
Okay, so, then we'll leave the workshop session as it is for now, pending-
I think so.
Moving forward, you know, as we, we'll see how it goes.
Again, we can only do, you know, what we can do in our time, so.
We actually have other jobs.
We gotta start-
If we do.
Gotta start thinking about it.
My, my other one's been failing, someone's leaving for Alaska tomorrow, I'm not going. All right, so I seek a motion to approve this workshop schedule as listed for now.
So moved.
So moved, with changes as needed.
Exactly. A motion from Ms. McKinney, with a second from Mr. Kennison, to approve the board workshop schedule for 2018, 2019 with amendments, and as needed.
Good job.
Any questions? Hearing none, we move to the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next thing is the approval of the bus routes.
I think they're, I've reviewed them all, I think they're perfect.
So here's my concern.
We take a white on Elm Street and stop at the third house on the left on Dean Road, I think they're perfect.
So I looked at them, and my concern is, I see a lot of heavy lifting on some buses, so buses-
You mean, heavy ridership?
Yes, how's that? Most buses hold 73?
Hold 88, I think.
Hold 78?
I think 78 or 88, actually. Some are 78, there are some larger ones.
Now, I would see that, I'd see 88 in an elementary bus, with three squish, but on a high school bus, yeah. So that's my concern, now, as we all know, parents drive. I just, I'm, I'm concerned with the, the amount of kids on the bus, and I just want to make sure that that will be watched and taken care of.
It's already been reviewed with the bus company, and some of the changes to these routes are about exactly that. It's gonna actually better balance out some of the routes than they were previously.
Oh, good, all right, so, but then you'll have an eye on that, just to make sure that we don't have, because we've had it before. We've had too many kids on the bus, kids standing, and I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again.
It can happen, it's against the law, our bus company would pull students off the bus and send another bus back.
No, that, you weren't here.
So I think, I mean, maybe it relates a little, and I'll start by, I'll make a motion to approve these, but just on the discussion part, I just, it really, I think there's gonna have to be some patience, because I think there's, not, not just in terms of busing, but in terms of the traffic patterns and getting to school, because I think people are gonna need to become accustomed to it. I'm sure there'll be all sorts of hiccups in terms of people dropping, trying to drop people off where they really shouldn't be, and they'll have to be corrected, and we'll, you know, but it, it's gonna evolve, I think, over the next month, so. And we have a crossing guard out there, we'll have SRO, Meredith said at the, at the forums the other night that Chief Tru has been working with us as well, and providing extra support for this, so.
We need to have safety paramount in our minds.
Anytime you make a change, it's gonna be, like, you would think this is so simple, but there'll be adjustments, there'll be things that we, you know, that, that we'll have to do- but there'll be adjustments, there'll be things we, you know, that we'll have to deal with as they come up, but...
And that's kind of what I was thinking, too. There's going to be a lot of traffic first day of school, because not everybody's going to know, so everybody just needs to be patient.
But in terms of safety and in terms of planning, I think we've done a great job in all that we can, and we'll adjust as the needs arise, so...
And just have patience with your fellow drivers, make way for the buses, follow the traffic patterns, the speed limit signs that are flashing already.
So they did engineer the bus loop well. I observed that today. I stopped a little short of the exit to allow the bus, the SST bus, to turn, it's the biggest, longest bus I've ever seen. It's air-conditioned, by the way, looks nice. But in any event, it made the turn out of there, piece of cake. It didn't come close to hitting the curb, and so...
Good thing I'm not driving.
But those are the types of things people have to be looking out for, because there was a line of traffic behind me and a line of traffic up the road, and that bus wanted to get out of there. It had places to go, so hopefully people just be neighborly and civil and let folks get out they need to get out, so...
We have all been in that place where we're in a hurry, we're stressed, our kid's running late, or we're running late, and we're just going to have to take a deep breath and go with the flow. I would agree with you, it's going to be probably the first couple weeks in particular are going to be challenging, as people get used to new patterns, the times, how long it's going to take. Try to leave early, give yourself as much time as you can, and then, again, do your best to be a good fellow citizen and wait.
The other thing I was thinking, we could, what is that road where the old term, so when you go past the high school, there's municipal parking?
Railroad?
Is that...
Maple?
No, the one after that. But I was thinking...
It's railroad.
Yeah, I was thinking, I could drop a kid there, turn around and go do what I have to do, and she can walk, he or she could walk to school, too. I mean, that, I mean, there are places to drop off children and not back up.
You could use the back of the town hall lot as a place to drop off a child, right? Because then you're away from heavy traffic, there is a space you can pull into, there are sidewalks all the way, you know...
Cars can go in at the end?
Yeah, and, you know, there's going to be a tendency, I mean, we know it's happened before this year, people want to, they try to pull into Lamprey Health, or they try to pull into the Pines, or they try to pull into Maple Street. You know, we would encourage you to remember that those are either businesses or residential neighborhoods that aren't really designed for that, and it just makes us more concerned for the safety of everyone involved.
People will try to, I'm sure, pull up in 150, on 152 and drop off right at the front of the high school. Can't do that, because that's...
No.
But again, all sorts of things will be happening, and they'll just, we'll just have to be patient and work them out.
I did, like, there was a spokesperson for Lamprey Healthcare came through at the high school forum and just said, please encourage your children not to park there, they will be towed, so...
Right.
We want to make sure that we're being neighborly, too. People are, you know, accommodating our changes and different things, and so we need to make sure we're reciprocating.
Meredith pointed out, they lost some of their parking.
Fifteen spots, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
So that's a significant impact.
From behind the school.
Correct, yeah. So they're sharing some space with us as a result of that, but it has limited their capacity in the front of their lot, for sure.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. McKinney, Mr. Kennison, and a second from Ms. McKinney to approve the bus routes as listed. We've discussed them, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving the bus routes, say aye.
Aye.
They are approved. Exciting. All right, our next meeting is, well, first of all, school starts on Tuesday, the 4th, which is coming. Our next school board meeting is next Thursday, the 6th, at 7:00 in Town Hall Auditorium. There'll be no school on the 11th for the state primary, and the election will take place at the elementary school.
Correct.
A loud and vote. And that is it for now. We will go, I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A32B and C.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, whoo, lost that word, from Ms. McKinney, and a second from Mr. Kennison to go into non-public session. We will do an all roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
And me. We are in at 8:11, 12.
12 it is.
12 it is.